Start with the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start every meeting, this way your voices were much louder. Roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Petrich.
Here.
Trustee Trombley.
Here.
Trustee Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here. Motion to approve the September tenth board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
I'm sure you've all looked at them, read them, is there any discussions, additions?
No, it's good.
No, it looks good.
Make reference to this again when I do my report, so. If there's some changes, no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The motion to approve the minutes, September nineteenth. Special board meeting. To change the date of the, of our meeting till tonight, for due tonight.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
That's all that can vote. Okay, with myself, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Presentation of petitions, communications, general question period for members of the community. As we have no one here, we'll move along. Mister Tetro is not here tonight. So I guess we'll start.
Did he leave a report or anything?
No.
He actually talked to us before he left.
I know he was.
Yeah, he called Dennis Richards regarding Burner's property on Oak Street.
Yes.
Um, he will have it cleaned by next Wednesday.
Okay. Alright. In that matter, I, I asked Mike to go and check on it, call Dennis. To make sure that everything was, was it, was on the up and up there. And I asked that, uh. We not take off the court, the court restriction to make sure that it was done, or he had to come back into court. And he had to make the trip to court last time. The judge made him come. And they discussed how this was going to get done. And, uh. So Mike called Mister Richards today and everything apparently has been taken care of in that respect. So finally we'll get that cleaned up after numerous, uh. Numerous years.
Also, the three violations that were part of correspondence. The garbage at LeBarge's has been cleaned up. And on Trombley's as well, and Grand Ash Target, the camper has been removed.
That's good. Thank you.
Good use of a piece of paper and stamp.
Everybody taking their blood pressure pill? Alright.
Let's go.
Deep breath.
Greetings and welcome to your October Village Board Meeting. As you've noticed, on your October first water wastewater bill. It showed an increase we had to apply as we prepare to pay our shared services water project loan repayment due in January of two thousand nineteen. Repaying this loan will be an annual event for the next twenty-nine years. As you recall, this loan was necessary to make water service improvements in both the village and the town. And was secured at zero percent interest for the loan duration. We are all receiving softer water, greater water pressure because of these improvements. With much needed and much appreciated improvements to our water system. As a reminder. This water system supplies water to many outside village users for which the village residents paid for. The system is owned and it is operated by the village. The residents bought and paid for this system. The shared water project simply made the area served larger with more users. And we will continue to operate a safe system. Supplying an excellent product for all. As we discussed at our last board meeting, there are changes in how this system is to be operated. As a business to supply a necessary essential. Your bills must be paid on time by the end of the issuing month. The October first billing must be paid, must be paid for on or before October thirty-first. We can no longer wait for bills to be paid five and six and seven and sometimes eight weeks late. Before we are forced to shut off services to residents and to businesses. Bills must be paid in full. We will accept, we will not accept. We will not accept partial payments. And we will not accept post-dated checks. You can, you can pay your bills in cash, by check, or by credit card. The village website has directions on how to pay with credit cards. Also, there will be a small service charge to use the credit card for payment. This is not paid to the village. For unpaid accounts, as we discussed last month. There will be a notice of late payment due sent on the tenth day after the due date. Shut-off notices will be delivered on the fifteenth day and shut-offs will begin on the seventeenth day. Weekends and or holidays. Notices and shut-offs, notices and or shut-offs will be extended to the next business day at the village office. The five percent late fee will be applied and the fee to shut off and turn water back on. Now that service is twenty-five dollars for each action. And must be paid in full with water charges before service is restored. Generally, the village can work with those with special circumstances for a day or two or three. Extension if arrangements are made in advance at the village office. For those amounts that are paid, or for those accounts that are paid on time, we thank you. For those who continually, underlying continually, do not settle their bills on time, this will serve as your notice of change. Be prepared, these bills arrive quarterly and now must be paid on time for service to continue. Water is an essential that must be paid for and must be treated as such. Thank you in advance for your attention regarding this issue. Tired of this every month having to talk about water charges. A reminder that the campfire extension will, will expire on October thirty-first. We will be back to no burning allowed in this village for any reason. The de-camp, decontamination process continues at the village office, in fact, they were today, they were here today. D E C continues to monitor and direct the remediation process. And hopefully this will be completed before the ground freezes, making this process, process difficult and more demanding. The plan right now, they had a huge vacuum machine here today. There's a lot of water that's being drawn through there, the clay is holding it, uh, now. The next plan is to come and put at least two huge horizontal lines out here in the ground. And attach it to a huge vacuum machine. Run the lines out of there, back along the sides of the building into the new building in the back.
You don't know, he may want to decide.
Uh, wherever he's gonna put it, but it's gonna be big enough to hold that fan. They refer to it as the doghouse. Uh, and this is a, this is a huge fan. That's gonna draw these films out. Again, D E C is monitoring this and they are in control at this point. So. On the good side. A special event will be held here in the village on October thirteenth at DeBelleo Park on River Street. I just had to say this, but you will get more information. More information, uh, from Trustee McPetrich. It looks like and sounds like a very exciting event and it's open to all, we hope you attend and it's at one.
One to three, I'll, I'll give the schedule.
Okay. And there will also be more interesting information discussed under old and new business this evening. Thank you for taking the time to participate in your village affairs. See the seats are full. Thank you. Janet?
Okay, well, starting with the Champlain History Day, which is Saturday, as the mayor said. At one o'clock, we have crafts for children focusing on boats. And at two o'clock, we have a program planned where we will be talking a little bit about the boating industry. That took place in the village of Champlain, um, and we have two ways side panels that will be unveiled. We also, um, had, we worked with fourth graders. At Northeastern Clinton and we have, we had a button contest, so we have the winner of the drawing. And this person will be awarded a certificate as well as the second and third place winners. And we also are running us an information scavenger hunt and there's still time to do that. So you can pick up the questions that are located right over there on that blue paper. And go around and look at all of the historic, um, markers and the panels and get the answers to the questions. And everyone who completes that is going to get a special medal.
Is the buttons crew available?
And the buttons are available for sale at a very nominal fee. Should've brought one with me, but I didn't. And Bayshard's maple truck is gonna be there. And I think that's it for History Day, but everyone should come, it's gonna be a lot of fun. Couple of other events, um, Truck or Treat is happening again on Sunday, October twenty-eighth. From one to three at the playground. And our next Champlain author visit is going to be with Nick Belukas. And that's on November seventh. At six thirty P M at the meeting house. And his, um, presentation is called Notes from a Journal of Faith. A couple of other just general announcements, I was at a meeting today with, um, the J C E O pack. And they are really in need of drivers to transport people to and from medical appointments. So if you have any time and you could help with that, please see Julie at the office. And I think a lot of people already know this, but there's a blessings box that was placed at the church. On Butternut Street and it's filled with food and paper products for people to either contribute to or pick up things. And also there's a, another new little free library located on Main Street between the old pharmacy and the house. And the only thing I want to say is there's, I'm just really impressed that there are so many houses that are being renovated right now. Things are looking pretty spiffy, particularly up in French Village, those two homes. And then there's, and one on Elm Street, and then there's even new construction, so. Kudos to everyone who's willing to invest in our little village. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen?
Um, on the, on the blessing box, I actually had to make a call this morning to Reverend Patty because I don't know if a person got into it. Or a critter.
Oh.
And I did not have time to stop, I was running late for work, but stuff was scattered.
Well, I bet it was a critter.
All over the place, so I do have.
Stucks.
I do have, um.
Yes.
A call into Reverend Patty just to let her know that it was all picked up when I came home from work, but there was stuff scattered.
Oh my goodness.
Down the walkway, all over the sidewalk, so if it was a critter.
Digging, yeah.
You know, shame on that little critter, but he was probably hungry. If it was a two-legged person, uh.
Maybe we got a bear like that.
Shame on them. So let's hope it was a, it was a critter because it is a very needed thing.
I don't think that door latches real securely, I'm trying to remember.
So it, it probably is an animal, we've, we've had a lot of animals in the neighborhood, you know.
Maybe it blew open first and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
It might be a good thing for our residents, people who are viewing this, to bring a can or two and put it in there.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, because it did look like it was very full, even with what was not out all and scattered. So, um.
Okay, great.
That's good.
Just, uh, just a note on that. Mike, I have not had a chance to get with you on sidewalks.
It's okay. Don't want time anyway.
Yeah.
We're, we're working on.
There are a lot of forms set.
We're, 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 we've got a bunch formed that are in rough shape, a lot of them have to be done in two quarters, so we're trying to get enough form that we can get a cement truck and, and, and get what we can done. So.
It's progress.
That's good. I think that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Tom?
Okay, um. Regards to the blood drive and the food drive that we just conducted, they were both successful. I'd like to report the food drive was, collected a record amount of money.
Very good.
Out of eight years of doing this, so we collected thirty-six hundred and fifty dollars.
Fantastic.
In monetary donations. The previous record was thirty-five, twenty-five. Food, of course, was down just a couple hundred pounds, it was twenty-nine hundred, it was forty-one pounds of food. Typically, it's about thirty-one hundred, but. If I was to graph this thing, the food always goes down and the money goes up. It's like, you know, you gotta get one or the other, which is great because they do a lot of money. So it was very successful, so I want to thank everybody that, you know, donated, came down, participated, helped, it was awesome.
And this will benefit?
It, it benefits the Moore's Wesleyan Food Pantry, which serves eight towns and villages, so. I, don't quote me in numbers, I think we have sixty-one from Champlain. I think there was like thirty or forty from Rosas Point. There was, and the good news is that the total number of families that are signed up have gone down, again, don't quote me, it was four hundred and sixty-something last year, I believe, and it's three forty-something this year. So obviously there's more people working, which, it's a very good sign for our economy, things are, want to go in the right direction in regards to that. The other thing was, I, I, forgive me for not thinking of this earlier, but it wasn't on the agenda, but I heard some talk about the sign, the village sign, I came down, looked at it. Uh, over the door. I had, I had to go to Northeast Wood, Woodworkers for, uh, a personal purchase, so I talked to Scott about it because I had a lot of questions in regards to what we were gonna do. And, you know, he offered to, to replace it, as you, as you well know.
He's contacted, we discussed.
Yeah, well, I was concerned in how we're gonna mount it, because, you know, that material is, is different than solid wood. This is, this is mounted with, you know, I put it up, it's bolted to the building on angle irons. So I talked to him about how we could mount his new material that he's offering to do. And he'll put a wood inset in it, so we have something to screw to. So we can mount it, mount in the same fashion. You know what I'm saying, in other words, he will glue in a, probably a piece of plywood into the back of that material. So we've got something to screw into. So we don't have to try to bolt through it and have issues with that. The other thing he asked was, he's willing to do this at no charge except for the artist. He would hope that we could pay the artist, I don't know if he, he's already contacted you and told you that, or if that's new.
No, he did not speak about that, he, we just talked about redoing the sign, making a whole new sign.
Yes. And that's, that's if we want this new logo that we're used on the round nine side, paint it on. You know, he said if you want that.
I told him, yes, I'd, we'd like to.
Instead of the interexit, yeah.
Yes, instead of the interexit.
Well, so I asked him, I said, but what does the artist charge, and he didn't know exactly, it'd be, it'd be somewhere between one and two hundred dollars.
I think that's manageable.
I thought so too, but I, I'm bringing up the board, I didn't know, I did this part of my report, that's something I kind of worked on, but. So I don't know if you want to add that to your new business for a, a vote, so that we're spending money on. He's willing to start it, I just gotta, I'll just have to get up there or be up there with you, or if you guys want to do it, we need to measure, give him measurements. Not only the sign, but I need to measure where the brackets go, so we get that inset in the right place.
Could use a piece of wood or angle or something.
Well, it's already got angle iron up there, and the reason for it is I wanted it installed away from that window, because it sits up above the window. So we'll have to, it leaves a gap for water and then air to dry, et cetera.
French can get a stainless or a flat screen key, mount it on and push it.
Yeah, it's similar to that, I mean, that's all it is, it's.
Really?
I lagged angle iron into the building and then there's angle iron to the sign, you just put four bolts in. You just bolt it off to the side. It, we put it up the same way, it just needs that inset to hold that material up, it's, it's not a, I forget what the material is, it's not a foam, it's heavier than that, it's more dense, it's almost like a countertop. Material. I forget the name of it. But it won't hold a lag screw well enough, I don't think, to take that abuse from the wind. And he said if you bolt through it, then you need to paint around it and, or put a plug, and then the plug. Like, he showed me his sign, so over time the plug has caused like a little chipping and salon with the paint. So anyway, that's the plan we came up with and how to, how to get it installed.
I think that's, I think that's a good plan. He thought like he was, he was gonna come get this one. It would be probably early spring. Before it was put back up, but that's fine.
Well, I don't think he needs this one, if I give him measurements.
Well, he must have the same.
He came, he came to look at it.
Yeah, he told me that, so.
Yeah.
When, what we agreed upon, if I can give him the measurements and the dimensions of the sign and the dimensions of the brackets, he would work on it.
It would be a winner project.
When he can fit it into his schedule, meanwhile, this one can stay up there.
Okay.
And when he gets it done, we can switch him.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I've done some measuring on all these days. Okay. Okay.
We can, uh, we can pull down the funds as soon as we have a better idea how much it's going to be.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
It's a good plan, thank you.
Amy?
I, I have nothing tonight, just, um, a shout out to the library, they've been, um, they've got monthly events scheduled now, which is kind of exciting to see, they just had a sip and paint with, uh, twenty, I think it was twenty-seven people there, it was really kind of nice. And I am an artist at heart, just to let y'all know that my painting is for sale.
It is for sale?
I keep looking at it, I'm like, man, hot, damn, I'm good. My fifth grade art teacher didn't know what he was talking about.
Was this the art talking or was?
It, it was, I think the sipping that went with it. It was fun. So it's good to see, you know, the events between the meeting house and the library and renovations in the village and, you know, it's just good to see. So if we could get that good faith going with conversation with the town, it would be great.
Yep. I'm not gonna bite on this one, we're gonna just.
Just had to add it, you know me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I've just got my blood pressure under control from my last drink, so I'm just gonna move on.
Well, we're such an incredible community, I have to say, I don't understand. I mean, we are an unbelievable community, why can't this conversation go on? Just have to say it, I'm done, moving on.
Nope, you can go on as long as you want, and I guess I, I, I really feel that, uh. As the minority party of this shared services exercise. I think this village has gone above and beyond. What we were, we were supposed to do in the beginning. I mean, I'll give you a fervent example here, that's a new word, I'll give you an example. We had a village, we have a village employee who went far beyond. What the expectations were of him in terms of making this water project be successful. I mean, the odds were stacked. The engineering, I think misled us a bit, or a lot. The construction company that was hired, I'll probably get sued for saying this, but I will anyway. Left us high and dry. And I believe this village has gone, again, beyond what was expected. And our employee was almost on call every day. And went almost every day to solve some problem or some issue dealing with this water project. And Mike Joliker went far above what he was expected to do, as he does in a lot of areas. But the part that bothers me the most. Is there was no recognition, and I'm sure he was not doing this for recognition, but still, if you have someone who does a great job for you, they ought to be thanked. There was no thank you there. There was no outward appreciation of what Mike was trying to do to keep this project in line. There were other issues. That I feel the village residents, and I apologize to you for this, but I feel the village residents have had to foot the bill and to. Help an entity that has been not as, as, as forthcoming as it should be. Finger pointing only goes so far in my book. And unless you're gonna step up and accept the responsibility and know what the project is about. The lack of understanding here is, is huge, and I'm probably overstepping my bounds, and I probably should shut my mouth, but. Some would say I'm obsessive about this. We've put a lot of time in this project. I mean, some of us have put eight and nine years in this project. And it's been difficult at times. But I, I looked at this, I think we all looked at this as being something that the village residents who have bought and paid for the system. Over thirty years, they paid a weekly payment on this, or monthly payment on this system. And, or yearly payment, excuse me, on this system. And we supply, I think, an excellent product to our consumers. It is much better than we had six months ago, or ten months ago, or two years ago. And we've gone out of our way, I think, to make this work for everyone. And I would like to say that shared services still continued, or still is continuing. But sometimes I feel that there's a lack of motivation. Understanding and desire to make this work. That's my own thoughts and perhaps, you know, you can kick me if you want, but. I think this village has gone above and beyond as a minority stakeholder in this project. As a shared services participant. We have done far more than I think was called upon us to do, and I think that, uh. To be quite frank with you, I think we're generally underappreciated for what we have done on this project. The village residents paid for this whole system, I mean, they paid for the initial system. The project paid for some improvements, but how much was actually done within the village? That's why we've had, what, thirty-five water experiences since last August, or October. So. Talks continue. Slowly, but talks continue. And I think it will eventually. Come to an end. But we are taking the position that this village will not. Pay for any portion of the town's debt. We have enough to pay for ourselves. Our rate payers, the only thing that we can do is adjust rates. But we plan for this. Other areas have not. And they find themselves in a very difficult situation at this point. I know we were going to do this in executive session, but thank you for asking, I think it's better if the public knows what's happening. So we will continue with negotiations. We will continue as an upfront minority partner here. We have never said no in terms of requested information. We provided everything. One of my discussions with the, with the engineer yesterday. He brought up the benefit sheet and he said that is as accurate. he brought up the benefit sheet, and he said that is as accurate as it could possibly be. He said we went line by line, expenditure by expenditure, and line, and who it benefited. If it benefited the town, fine, it was put down as a benefit for the town, if it benefited the village, fine, it was put down as a benefit of the village. But he said that is as accurate as he and that company, that engineering firm could come up with. And that is the basis of our discussion. I feel, I think Janet feels, in our discussion, we are going to pay for the benefits that we receive.
Absolutely.
One of the factors is where is the money, where was the money spent in terms of new infrastructure? Four to one was spent in the town. They got the new pipes, they got the new hydrants, they got the new valves, they got all the new materials. Four to one was the expenditure difference. We received twenty-five percent of the benefits. It's only fair that that's all we pay for. You pay for the benefits you receive. So, if you have comments, please.
No, I concur.
And we all, we all agree.
You're absolutely right.
Take a deep breath. Let's have the.
There is a mediator service in Plasberg free of charge that will bring parties together to.
I believe that that may be the direction that we are heading in. It was brought up in discussion, and I think we felt. Go ahead, we'll go to arbitration.
Yeah, well, out of the Rural Law Center, they, they offer this, um, mediation, and it's been very successful in many things.
Well, there is a segment in the, in the IMA, which, you know, you pick and choose what you think is, is, is gonna benefit you. But there is a segment there that says arbitration is a possibility. We choose one, they choose one, and the two that are chosen will choose the third. We pay for one, they pay for one, we split the cost for the third, whatever that may be. If it's free, it's free, if it's a, if it's a legal charge, then it's a legal charge, but this is non-binding. It's a non-binding situation. And if, you know, uh, that may be where we go, that will be part of, that will be part of the discussion tomorrow with Mr. Bernine, as he's here. He'll be here at one o'clock, if you care to join, uh, but that's part of the, uh, the water project, the wreck trail that I'll report on here in a moment. And, uh, the, uh, the, the motorcycle affair that happened three years ago will be discussed as well. Let's have the report from the clerk treasurer.
Everyone has their expense and revenue reports for September.
You two are over there laughing, I don't know about this, you're gonna get that calling behavior.
We also did the water and sewer billing. Our water is sixty-seven thousand, seven sixty-nine, ten. And sewer was seventy-four thousand, forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents.
Seventy-four thousand, four hundred and?
No, seventy-four thousand, forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents.
So there's zero in there?
Yep.
All right. That's about average?
Um.
Up a little bit?
It's up a little.
Dry summer.
Yeah, a lot of gardening and pools and. Any questions on the balance sheet? Any questions for the clerk treasurer?
No, no, no.
Money wise, I think we're right on target for the, this time of year.
Salts pricing, huh?
That was two loads.
Oh, was it two?
That was two loads.
Yeah, it's supposed to be one and they, they brought another one, dumped it outside.
It was two.
Dumped against the water, about to take over.
Really?
Yeah.
Hey.
Against the water.
Need a motion to approve the warrant?
Uh, we have additional invoices for the warrant, the additional invoices are three thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents. And the total warrant is twenty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-three cents.
So any discussion on this, any questions? Comments? Christmas season is upon us, we bought our wreaths for the office here. Questions?
Yeah, I got one, what's the wax bank for the diesel and gas?
That is the gas card that they can go to.
Diesel and gasoline to buy it.
And then other, we get contract pricing and they take all the taxes off.
Well, I had to ask, cause I, I assume it was something to do with the card or using the buy it, not the location, but.
It's just for fuel, gas and, and diesel, all are non-ethanol, and diesel as well, you can use for that, that's what the only thing it's used for, wax, it's all for fuel.
So we're still buying in the same location, but it's just showing up as a different.
Yeah.
Different charge.
Yeah.
Okay. That's cool, we get the.
Sixty-five cents cheaper than a pump.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Price.
The thing is, if you're out somewhere, you need to fill up, at least you can, you still get state contract pricing, same thing with all non-ethanol. Cause we had no other place to do non-ethanol until, until we got the card, so for all of our schmuck, everybody was non-ethanol, which it's been, when you go to start, it starts. For, for a little bit of difference.
I did discover that.
He goes to stores together.
Usually, not a lot of getting stores.
Yeah, no, I had just.
That was a community.
Came in, it came in the mail.
Where do we get the information?
Oh, we got it, yeah, we got the mail.
You have to send it in the mail and just give it to one, either to the other.
Nice.
I didn't know at first if it was legit, that's why, but it is, so. Been a few months, I think it's been a few months, two, three months probably.
Hey. Everybody happy?
Yep.
Yes.
Need a motion to approve the warrant?
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
If there's no further discussion, I'll have a roll call vote, please.
Justice Trombley.
Aye.
Justice Bepetje.
Aye.
Justice Trombley.
Aye.
Justice Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Mike, what do you got to say?
Uh, we've been, uh, still staying pretty busy, um, we've got, uh, we installed a sewer line on, uh, on Moore Street for a house that was built up there a year or so ago, so now they'll have water and sewer. We also did the, uh, the new house on Will Street, the water and the sewer, uh, has been tapped and the main lines are in, I just gotta go do a meter set inside the home, the new home that they've, uh, they built, and then I've got one to do on Cedar Street, gotta cut our road on Cedar Street, um, they've got it piped out to the road, we've got to put water and sewer there, so we're gonna have to cut across our new roadway, um, to get that in. We rebuilt a few sewer manholes on, on Meadow that were all deteriorated. Just got, today we got in this new tank heater on the generator, the generator had, uh, the tank heater had, had the wastewater for the list station on, uh, Main Street, pumps it across the river, our tank heater had, uh, malfunctioned and melted. So we, we got a new tank heater on that today, so that's all set. I also got some lighting fixed in Pocket Park, um, there's been issues with lights there.
It looks good, I drove by it this evening, it looks good.
We fixed one, we put one new LED one, and I also put a new LED light for the flags, got that fixed, and we put two, two new flags up today, um, down there as well. Um, as far as other repairs, we, the big sander, we had to change bearings, roller, spinner, uh, that stuff's done. Other than that, we've, uh, we do a little tree trimming here, some, some trees that were in bad shape. We're working on sidewalks, um, some that were either dug out for water breaks or, um, shut offs, or just some that were in bad shape, we've got some formed. We've still got a few more formed, um, to get enough here to get a little of concrete, um, get those poured so we can get our ramps in and whatnot. Um, as far as streets, um, I've got some streets ready for paving, Ashline Drive, Patricia Lane, Meadow Lane, Moore Street. And I'm working on, I'd like to get pine and spruce done, I've still got drainage to put in on Pine Street, and I've got some drainage and spruce, but even if, if worse comes to worse, if we can get them paved, if I have to work on the drainage after, we'll do what we gotta do to get them done. Uh, those I'm waiting on the county, um, I've been back and forth, um, I got ahold of them, I don't know, a month ago. I got ahold of them when they were here, and they, I talked to one of the guys, they said maybe a month. And then I called them, I don't know, probably a month ago, and they said, well, we're done that, this way. So, um, I got ahold of one of the head ones at the county, and he said, I got, he got back to me last week, and there's a possibility they may do our paving at the end of October, but they couldn't guarantee a hundred percent for sure if they're gonna get here and do our paving or not. So that's where we sit right now, so I don't know, they were like three weeks behind, they had a bunch of roads with their cell, with their cells they were still doing. So I, as of right now, I'm not a hundred percent sure if we're gonna get asphalt or not, don't know.
Why are they so behind? It was the perfect summer for paving.
Too much of it.
Well, they had a lot of it, usually they do, I, I think they do their roads first usually, and I think they wait in their road to the end. Um, and it was quite a few places that had roads to do, and I think just, and they're, they work on a, on a four-day work week, so they, they take Mondays off. A lot of the towns take Fridays off, it just depends how the rain falls too, when, when you do get rain, but they, they were, he, he was out like three weeks, he was out like three weeks behind.
It was, it was also a lot of time.
And I don't know if they had, if they had issues, sometimes they have issues getting asphalt at the quarry, cause everybody's trying to get it, and sometimes they get backed up, so you can only get, you know, you can't get enough, that, that could be part of it. So I don't know, you know, it all adds up over time, and then like now, you get days that, when they are there, you're getting rain, so. So I don't know, um, hopefully they'll be able to get out here and, and, and help us get some paving done, um, we haven't did any paving, and we did some patching like two years ago, we haven't really did any asphalting, it's been a few years, um, it's, we're way overdue.
Just too many.
Way overdue to get it done, so we're, uh, we're hoping that they'll get here and, uh, and we'll be able to get some of that done. Um, um, I also have, um, I'm waiting, I'm waiting, I've got a, a place that's gonna let me use a hot box, we gotta start patching, we've got a lot of spots that need to be patched. Well, we've had water breaks, um, and, and, and other, in other spots, um, there's none in town that's got it right now, so when they get it back, I'm gonna see if we can borrow it. And then I gotta find a roller, um, so we can get some of our patchwork done, because usually in November here, the plant shut down. So if we don't get our asphalt and get these, you know, I've got cross covers put in and a lot of road cuts that I've gotta get, I gotta get them done. So we're working on that. Um, Rural Water's supposed to be here possibly the end of this week or next week, and they're gonna help us modify our flushing procedure again, because the last time we did it, we, um, had one new tank online, I believe, and now we have two new tanks online and with all the, with all the loops. No, we, we had, we had the, uh, new piping in line, so we had to change how our fresh flushing procedure went, you know, different valves to shut in, in a different route. But since then, we've got both our new tanks online, so now we're, we've pushing from two places, so we have to redo our whole, our whole flushing protocol again, so we are, uh, Morris from Rural Water's supposed to come up to help me, um, go through that again, so I'm hoping in the coming weeks here, we'll have that done and be able to start, uh, start flushing, uh, we're gonna get our flushing done. Um, I got a few guys next week to go into, uh, two different days, go into snowplow refresher and I think I've got one on Monday, one on Tuesday, and then Wednesday, they're both going to a water sewer class, um, to get credits, which they need to, one of my operators needs to keep his license, his water license, so. We're also gonna have, um, we're gonna be doing haul, um, pickup. Um, brush pickup, uh, so we'll be picking up leaves and loose brush, uh, the dates, I know the leaves are, are, uh, haven't, they just started falling there. So I'm planning on, uh, Friday, October twenty-sixth, Monday, October twenty-ninth. And then I think we'll skip a little bit, we'll hit, uh, maybe November ninth and November twelfth. By then they should be, most of them should be down. Uh, please note, only brush that is three inches or less in diameter and eight feet or less in length will be picked up. Leaves must be bagged in clear plastic bags, only one truckload will be allowed per property. Haul brush should be put out curbside by seven AM on each day, uh, each scheduled day, um, and I ask if, you know, a lot of times when you put leaves, a lot of times we get into, cause we have to open all the bags, um, a lot of people don't put them in clear bags, they end up with whatever garbage they pick up, um, dog crap, you know, you dig through them bags, you got, so there's a lot of stuff that's, uh, extras, not just yard debris that ends up in old bags, I mean, if they can, try not to put that in there. It's not, uh, it's not so nice for us.
It's dangerous for the guys who are picking it up.
Absolutely.
And we are not going to pick up any dark colored bags, any black bags, they're staying on your line. And that brings up another topic, please get this done early, we cannot be picking up bags and leaves and branches and tree limbs and all of that stuff into December. We will pick it up on the dates, I mean, if the leaves fall later, yes, we can extend that, but we're not gonna be picking this stuff up in December. It's gonna happen in November?
End of October.
End of October, first couple of weeks in November, uh, we don't have the manpower or the time.
The other, the other thing is too, uh, there's been a lot of people bringing stuff to the Elm Street, um, we've got a key here, if you, if you live in the village and the debris comes from in the village, the, the brush, the leaves and loose debris, come to the office and get the key, we've had a lot of people lately, they just drive up, throw it over, you know, along the stones or on top of the stones, loads of brush backing on a neighbor's property and just throwing it on top of the stone wall, and we have to pick it off. Um, just come here and get the key, um, because if it's, if it continues to be abused, we're gonna close the site and nobody will be able to bring any yard debris, it'll be off limits, and anybody caught dumping, it's all on camera, anybody caught dumping, um, whatever action board wants to take, then we'll, we'll go from there.
We will follow up on that.
So, um, don't abuse it, it's definitely, it's been abused in the past, you know, we, we'd like to keep it for our village residents, and eventually that's gonna be full. And then we'll probably use it for a yard of our own to stockpile, but, uh, don't abuse it, um, that's the biggest thing, just come here, get the key, and then return it after, um, and keep things, keep things going smoothly. That's all I, uh, that's all I have.
Well, let me, do you have any questions for Mike, any discussion? Well, let me, uh, I guess we can introduce this now. You're all aware that we have, we have, uh, an employee shortage for a period of time. Mike and I have been in discussion about how we want to address this issue, uh, how we want to, I mean, we need someone to help out with the plowing, uh, do we wanna look for a temporary person, a temporary hire? Do we wanna look for, uh, you know, a part-time? Can we afford to put somebody on full-time for a short period of time? Uh, it's certainly not to replace the employee that is, that is out on a disability issue, but we need to, you know, uh, I don't wanna spread the existing staff here too thin.
No, I can, it's just a little group.
You know, we got so many things, we got, you know, the plowing and the sanding and the sidewalks that are coming up, uh, we got the wastewater and the water plants that have to be maintained. You know, it puts a lot of pressure on Mike, because he goes out and cleans out the fire hydrants in the streets that we can't, that we can't back the truck into or pull the truck into because it's too dangerous. Mike goes out. Uh Mike goes out with a truck and, and a plow and, you know, takes care of a lot of this, so. It speeds up the sanding process, the plowing process, and it doesn't put the people in, the drivers, in a uh, in a dangerous spot. So he and I are talking about this, I made a call to one of the temp agencies. Uh they have people, but they will not send people for that responsibility. Because of the liability, they said, we can send you someone with a license that can operate the, the vehicle. But it's not gonna be in a temp, you have, you being the village, have to hire them. And not put them on as a temporary person, so you know, I understand the liability of it, I understand why they take that position. Uh but over the next week or so, uh. Mike and I will band you this around, uh you know, you're, you're more than welcome to join in on the discussion. I just would like to have uh, I guess, your understanding and you're okay with whatever the decision may be. We have to have somebody here from now, probably uh November until March or April. Um preferably, like to find someone who has a CDL, a CDL.
Class B.
Class B, uh maybe a retired person, you know, that wants to come in and. On call maybe, or even come in, we have enough to do, you know, for six months employment. But there are other considerations there. But as long as, you know, we go ahead with the temporary situation and we can, we can get by. And not burn out our employees and, you know, keep uh, keep the streets safe and open. Uh they may not get plowed as much and they may not get sanded as much, but they will be safely maintained. But that's where we are at that point right now, we will find someone, we will get this situation taken care of. But it's, it's just taking a bit of time because you got so many other things to do, but we'll get it done.
So, so basically to, to recap, we, we're all in agreement, we're gonna hire somebody, but we're gonna hire on our own, under. Our own umbrella, that's compared to a less staffed employee, which we won't be able to do it because of the liability.
Exactly, exactly. Yeah, we'll have to look at what we, we'll have to look at what we offer if it's on a temporary basis, uh. I don't think we have to hire, or we have to offer some of the other benefits that we would.
Right, they wouldn't have, would they have to do union dues and all of that?
Well, I think, I think there's a, I think there's a time period before they have to start with the union situation.
Yeah, because you'll have, you'll still have unemployment insurance afterwards, so that'll bump our rates. On that component, sure, I mean, we don't have an option, but you have to understand that's gonna be part of the cost with it as well.
Well, that's why we would, I think we would prefer, you know, a retired person or, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
If it was out of constructive interest. Okay, so, just to let you know, we're, we're, we're at the night situation, okay, uh.
Get a temporary order.
Is there, is there, is there, is there anything with Mike?
No.
Anything at all with Mike?
We'd have to ask him in the exact discussion when he found out.
Mike, no?
No, good.
Okay, uh correspondence, we've already addressed, I think, three of them.
Notice of violation to Brianna Mash here, notice of violation Ron Trombley. Notice of violation Curtis LeBarge, J C O monthly report for September and a second quarter sales tax revenue.
Which looks pretty good. All right, is there any, uh, anything else, any comments on the correspondence?
I know, right?
Under new business, a couple of things here, had a conversation, I don't know if we talked about this at the last board meeting or not, but I had a conversation with Mister uh. Mister McManus in regards to this wreck trail, it has come, it has come to the point where. We have to do, uh, we have to take this over, in fact, one of the things that I wanna talk to Mister Mernane about tomorrow is the uh signing off on. The ownership paperwork for that wreck trail. Um Mister McManus would like to set aside some money for repair. Uh for this trail, because the county will no longer be responsible once we own it. For fixing this trail, coming back during, you know, in the spring for the washouts and things like that, so his suggestion was, initially his suggestion was to request. Uh the sum of five thousand dollars from each municipality. In discussion, we thought that this was a bit much. So he's looking for some funding from governmental resources. To help out with some of this, uh hopefully with some paving, but for the restoration and repair of this trail. Uh the discussion today was. That requesting that much money all at once was sort of uh, would be difficult. I mean, the town is responsible for the majority of this trail, Rouse's Point has very little of the trail. Uh we have some, but we are the lowest tax base of the three entities. So the discussion now is, can each municipality put some money aside? Over a period, a budget for it over a period of five years to build a pot, to build a stake, if you will. To do the repairs and, and the uh repairs necessary to do on that wreck trail. I think the wreck trail has been a, has been used a great deal, I've heard nothing but compliments about that wreck trail. Uh I think it's a benefit and an attraction to the village, the whole area. Uh the suggestion was, could we budget a thousand dollars a year for the next five years? To put in a, in a pot, if you will, we'll still keep our, you know, keep it ourselves to dole it out whenever it's necessary. To do the repair and the reparations or whatever needs to be done on that wreck trail.
But are you repairing the part that, I mean, is it a, a pool of money to repair any repair that's needed? Or is it gonna be segregated out as to whose section is whose? And you know, what sections weren't paved and what percentage of those fall within each. Municipality, because those are the ones that are gonna fail the most, as they did this year?
Well, it's however you wish to do it, if you wanna put, if you wanna put the money aside. And put it as a stake for just the village part of this wreck trail.
So what part is ours, from where to where?
It goes from Elm Street up to.
Pocat.
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 So you got a few feet that's paved there.
The town obviously, from, the town's from Pocat all the way to Rouse's Point, and then Rouse's Point has. A very small segment of this wreck trail along the streets. Uh if you want to make it a stipulation. That this money is, is specifically, what we contribute is specifically for village side repairs and whatever we need to do. Uh I think the thinking here is thinking, I believe, is that it becomes a, it becomes a pot, you know, you throw it in, you use it as necessary.
Yeah, as, as, as the original thought was, it was a shared service type.
But, you know, I.
Not fair about that word now.
I know.
We have some, there are some other issues involving. The tax base participants, uh the number of village participants versus participants in other areas, especially the recreation program. Uh so however you wanna do this, I think it's a good idea that we set aside some money to take care of our share of this trail. If you wanna set aside a thousand, whatever the amount that you decide on, and we can. Make it a stipulation that this will be used, but unfortunately, it falls on his shoulders.
You need to quote what it costs for asphalt, Elm Street, Pocat, where these ended.
Yeah, and.
Because right now they got washouts and you need a huge roller, you need a calcium, we don't need that.
That's the thing, that's what this whole thing was, it wasn't supposed to be.
It was supposed to be ass.
We didn't get the asphalt, and so the question is, here's another one of these. Projects.
Yep.
That we got the short end of the straw, um.
Well, it, it, if the money, if the money appears from.
And it didn't get fixed, so if they had done their job properly and put a drainage along the path. So the water could have flowed off appropriately, you would have had as much of an issue in the couple of those two areas. Because the water washed right over it, they didn't, anyway, it, so. The company who did it should have fixed the problem, the county should have fixed it, remember with, all this money was paid to. But again, it's not, we're left with the damaged area and now give us more money, more money, we keep coming to our villagers and saying, okay. More, more.
Well, the, the biggest part of this is.
Part of the problem too, was the cost of the uh sidewalk project along Elm Street, I think was part of it as well. I think I remembered it was a large sum of money invested in that. Which probably is why we lost asphalt on the trail itself.
What, you remember what it was, was it fifty thousand right to pay off?
Yeah, that's gonna be a.
It was about, it was about fifty thousand and right now.
But why was that necessary to do?
Right now, that money is uh.
Right, the sidewalk was fine.
I know, I'm not sure why they spent so much on that part of it.
Right now, the uh, the money is, is being, is being asked as a contribu-. Contribution from our local legislature. To generate enough money, you know, whether it's fifty thousand or twenty five thousand or whatever. To put towards the uh, to put towards the blacktopping of this segment that we are discussing. We will be the receiver of that, uh our portion. Thus far, it is still in discussion, uh whether this money will be available to the local legislator or not. And we'll, we'll see where that goes.
In theory, it would be great, again, we are a community, we should be able to, to jointly put our money together and, and, and fix things. And that's ideally what I would like to do, but I, I have a, a huge reservation.
Well, I think.
Historically, hasn't worked out so great.
I think we all have.
So again, if we move forward, we're saying, yeah, yeah, uh, uh this is what we should be doing, we're one community, we are Champlain.
But that's, as you said, that's not how it ships out here, or sips out here very often.
I have no problem putting, setting aside a thousand dollars a year in our budget.
Or, or a little more, I mean, I think, I think, I think, I think, I don't think that's enough, I need to drop in a bucket.
Yeah, more than that, I think.
Because as, as time goes on, everything, as we know, the price goes up. I have no problem setting money aside in our budget for something that our community truly benefits from. I mean, we, we use the trail, we love it, it's beautiful, it's.
Absolutely.
Well, everybody talked about it, used it.
You see wildlife while you're out there. But I do have some heartburn over um. Pooling of funds, if you will, I have no problem repairing the sections that are ours. Or that we are responsible for, um I have no problem with that.
Okay, I, I think that is the feeling of the board, am I right, reading this?
Yeah, I, I, I think so, I mean.
I'm not sure, I have to think of it.
It, it would be nice if we could just do the whole thing, you know what I mean?
Should we just put, setting the money aside in the budget?
We don't need to say.
We don't need to work these details out now.
Yes, absolutely.
And actually, maybe our legislator is gonna work on that some.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, so I don't wanna send a strong message, right, that we're keeping it only for us.
Right. Right, exactly.
Right, cause I'm.
I'm not comfortable with that right now.
I agree.
Neither am I.
Yeah.
But I don't think we even need to go down that road yet.
Yeah, why do we have to, I mean, we don't have to put how it's gonna.
We can put the.
We'll put the money aside.
Yeah, put the thousand aside.
Yeah.
I have no trouble with that.
Yeah.
No, I have no problem with that either, but I'm gonna go back to what Amy said and we're all, we're all thinking that.
Mm-hmm.
Historically, this sharing of things hasn't worked out so well for us, um.
Well, one, one project in particular, but there's been other.
Well, we should still keep the options alive.
Yeah, there's been other things that have worked out well, I think for Mike's.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can dodge for that, for we have shared.
Hey, if someone wants to put that in the form of a resolution, we can vote on it. Put the money aside in next year's budget, no stipulations as yet, and we can always adjust the amount.
Do we even have to make a resolution, it's just part of our budget process?
Well, we can do that too.
Does he want one, does, does Harry want one though, to, I think he might want something, I don't know exactly what.
I think he wants.
That says that we're taking the action to do it.
Yeah, I believe he wants something.
So if he needs a dollar amount, I think it needs to be more than a thousand dollars.
Well, I'd like to keep it at a, you know, a thousand a year, over a five year period.
Yeah, but if we say that we're going to give X dollars and we put this in the memorandum or whatever you wanna, a resolution.
Understand.
Then we're held to that, so.
Well, can it be for rec, not just a wreck trail, where you can do it with something else, you know?
Well, we can, we can work this in.
I think it should be for the trail.
We can work this into the budget process when we start working on our budget in February or March. We can add a, a line on here, wreck trail.
Absolutely.
Now, what happens if we need to do a repair before then, where's that money come from? Cause if it just needs stone, you're gonna have to get a huge roller, calcium chloride, we don't have a, a regular huge, I mean, that's how they did it. That's how the county did it, they came through with a huge asphalt roller, put that fine stone, they gotta grate it off, put calcium chloride to harden it. We don't have any of that, if that has to be, we've got washouts now, I've got cones on, on the edges. But if, as long as you guys got a place to get the funds from to take care of it, I don't know how. You just need, you need to think about if it's repaired before next year. Whether, which is gonna be, uh, till we close, I don't know if we're gonna close it, or if they're gonna close it, I mean, they can still.
No, it stays open all year.
So I don't know, you just need to think about how, if you're gonna need repair before then, how, where's it gonna come from or how you're gonna.
And I can relate that concern to Mister McManus, that we would like to see the wreck trail repaired before we make a commitment. They have the equipment to come up and do that, and at one point he said that they would, could come up with the roller and, you know.
And that can be done after paving season.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not.
I mean, it's.
When the plants are closed.
They can do that when the ground's frozen. I'll, I will share that conversation with you.
Cause it may have to get done again in the spring when we have runoff.
Yeah, so definitely.
That's, that's the other thing, and by then, we're gonna own it, and then it's gonna be our problem, and it's gonna be nothing in the budget. To take care of that.
Well, we're certainly not gonna go out and buy a roller, we're just equipment.
No, if the county wanted to, to help us with, with that work, yeah, whatever it is, once a place a year.
And then what's going on with our insurance too and liability when we take over this and we have the damaged trail? Saying, this is just ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching.
That is true.
Can you full sign it at your own risk or no, is that, well, you have to find out from, from Renee.
I don't know, finally stands up.
If you can full sign, I mean, use the trails, use at your own risk, I don't know if there's anything legally, if somebody gets hurt on it.
Uh we'll have that discussion with you.
Maintain or you get a washout if somebody gets hurt, you're right back to.
Yep.
Haven't talked to him in a long time, I saw a good money's worth.
Absolutely, needless.
Okay, so I will uh relate to Mister McManus that we are willing.
Oh no, thanks so horribly now.
We are willing to participate, uh we will make a budget in our, align in our budget when we do the process. We feel strongly that repairs should be made before we take ownership. And that. We will see how this, how this works out, I mean, if we have. Four thousand dollars worth of repair to do in the spring, obviously it's just not, I mean, we, we, if we own it, we gotta take care of it. And I think we all believe that the, the wreck trail is a positive, so we are, we're going to have to repair it. So we need to make sure that we're ready for that aspect of it.
Now, I don't know if it's a possibility to see what do it cost to asphalt, the center of the county would do it. And the village buy the asphalt for our investment and get it pulled that way too, I don't know if that's a possibility, to see how much. Cause once it's asphalt, then you're, you're in good shape, but that's just a fact.
Yeah, I, I, I know where, I know where you're going, after this ownership, maybe it would behoove us to, to, to make a larger investment to do that. To prevent putting money into it twice a year or three times a year.
We, cause that's what we'll.
Cause that's what we're gonna continue doing forever.
There's just no way, yeah.
Are we able to use any chips money for that?
I was just thinking that, I'm not sure if we can use that.
It would be worth checking into because we do have. It would be worth checking into because we do have a bank of CHIPS, CHIPS money.
It's a, that's a, that's a good, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's a possibility.
You check on that link?
Yep.
All right, you check on it, I'll check on it.
I think you can check on it.
Hmm?
If it can be used, if it can be used, if it can be used for sidewalks, I would hope it can be used for, it can be used for.
We're gonna get a street fund. Well, we don't use it for sidewalks, we use it for streets.
But you can though, it's.
Yeah, but we don't because there's a whole, there's a whole government procedure.
Oh.
But it would good, it would be good to just know the answer whether we could or not, that way we wouldn't be going, oh, okay, well, we could possibly use some of that and then find, you know.
I don't know being a rec trail because CHIPS is for streets, I don't know streets and sidewalks usually, but you can play that out.
Mm-hmm.
I think we have some discretion there.
There is some, there is usually some funding cuz you can even use it to build a. Buy a piece of equipment or or use it to for a shop, some storm recovery or something.
I might, I might be something, absolutely.
String recovery, return recovery. That's why, that's why I compared a lot of them.
You know, there's signs.
Got a couple things to check on, uh see if we can use tips funding, uh I will contact Mr. McManus tomorrow. Share my, uh share the board's decision with him. And we'll see where that goes, so we'll talk to Mr. Maney tomorrow about the trail, the transfer of property to the village, um and we will talk about maintenance. Like, uh I guess from a liability aspect, if we can put signings there, use at your own risk or whatever the case can be. But we're gonna have to carry that on our policy. Excuse me. Okay, so, what he needs. We talked about water issues, uh pick-up takes. Uh trail. Okay, where's the, where's the paperwork?
Man, well, yeah, um did we vote on the money?
No, I don't bring it to it this far, we'll just add it to the book.
No, we didn't vote on our, uh.
Yeah, we did vote on it.
Yeah, we did, we voted on the warrant. Did we?
Mm-hmm.
We had a first or second, I don't know.
We did, we just.
I need some.
Okay. All right, that's what's coming up, ladies and gentlemen.
Vacation!
Oh.
Oh.
Well, I mean.
Well, maybe, but anyway. The two thousand nineteen elections, Village of Champlain. Whereas, the next village election for offices of the Village of Champlain, New York, will be held on March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain must designate by resolution and publish offices. Which are to be filled at each or at such election and the terms thereof. Be it therefore resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Champlain has determined the following offices to be filled. And to be voted thereupon with the terms of such offices respectively noted as follows. Mayor, term, two years. Trustee, term, two years. Trustee, term, two years. Be it further resolved that as required by village election law, number fifteen dash one oh four thirteen A or three A, excuse me. Notice of village election must be given at least four months prior to election date. And that the office or offices to be voted upon be included in the notice. This resolution shall take effect immediately. I need a motion to approve.
Slow move.
I need a second to approve.
Second.
And I need a roll call vote if there's no further discussion.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFedge.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. All right, you have, uh you have with you, and Mike, you might wanna help me out here. You have a request for a wastewater credit from Mitchell Gay. Uh on September fourteenth, we discovered a water leak on the service line under the slab. Superintendent sought to look at it, I would like to ask for a sewer credit because the water did not enter the sewer system, the problem has been resolved. No leak at this time, thank you, it's Mitchell Gay, nine one ninety-four South Street. Uh the adjustment request was worked out. We received a letter attached from Mitchell Gay, tenant one ninety-four South Street requesting a wastewater credit. On the October two thousand eighteen water bill. Again, the synopsis here, the water leak was discovered under the slab, the gentleman who is requesting this tunneled under the slab. Found the leak, made the repair. Excuse me, I don't, I know it's not funny, but I just, uh made the repair, he is a renter. And as you see, the bill, the amount of water that was, uh that was, uh. Not entering the sewer system.
He's a renter and he fixed it?
And he crawled, he made, he crawled, he dug the tunnel and crawled under there and fixed it.
He went under about six, seven feet underneath and and I got pictures of the pipe that was cut out, holes in it, and he he fixed it.
Wow.
Yeah.
So.
And he wants to stay in the village after this?
Yep.
Pretty nice.
So, um let's see here, um. Water main break turned it off, uh contacted Mr. Gay regarding this matter, service line broken under the slab. Mr. Gay repaired that line, water service was turned back on, checked by Superintendent Joliker for any further leaks. Superintendent Joliker confirmed that it was fixed, no water entered the wastewater system as a result of the break. Average of last three week, three billings, six thousand gallons, uh amount used. On the four one seventeen bill, hundred and seventy-nine thousand, difference, hundred and seventy-three.
That's not four one seventeen.
That's what?
That's the ten one eighteen, sorry.
Ten one. Okay, ten one eighteen, amount used, ten one eighteen.
I didn't even catch that. That's pretty sad.
And the difference of a hundred.
We know what you meant, Mary.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I did too.
We looked at the data on top of the letter, we did that. Okay? So the uh the amount is for a hundred and seventy-three thousand gallons.
Yeah, stuck on the hundred.
Uh sewer credit for a hundred and seventy-three gallons at four dollars and eighty cents per thousand.
I make a motion to give the sewer credit of eight hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents.
I second.
And that is the rate, four eighty?
Yep, for wastewater.
Okay. All right, we have a, we have a a first and a second, is there any further discussion on this review?
No, I just wanna say that it meets our criteria, so.
Yes. Okay, do this with a roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFedge.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. Second, uh the second, under new business, discontinue sewer service. Uh we have a letter here from a resident, Jean Glad, I'm requesting that the water and sewer services be removed from. By Philly on Lane, the trailer on the property was removed on or around July fifteenth of two thousand eighteen. There should be no usage on there, I believe, and Mike, you can. Well, we can read this. Attached is the letter, we received a couple of forest from Jean Glad regarding his water sewer account on five Philly on Lane. He's requesting that his water sewer account be deactivated as the trailer was removed. From his property the second week of July. His recent water bill shows service fees for July, August, and September of two thousand eighteen. And water usage of a thousand gallons for a total of seventy-four fifty-five. If the board were to offer a prorated refund of service fees, Mr. Glad would be refunded. Water service fee of twenty-seven, the refund would be twenty-three ten. Sewer service fee, July sixteenth to September thirtieth, uh thirty-two, so the. Prorated refund would be fifty-five dollars and eighteen cents. And the total bill was, do we remember that?
Seventy-four fifty-five.
That's right, seventy-four fifty-five.
Okay, seventy-four fifty-five, thank you. So it'd be nineteen dollars and change.
I got questions, but. Do we wanna do it now or you want a motion on the floor to discuss that?
Need a motion before we can discuss.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, so the trailer's gone and he wants the services.
For fifteen days.
Discontinued.
He's not asking for that, I I just put that in there in case the board decided they wanted to do that, that's information in case someone suggested refunding us.
He's got a meter pit there, the trailer's gone, they pulled it out, he's not bringing a trailer back there. So with no trailer there, he doesn't wanna pay water and sewer service anymore, it's an empty lot.
But we have to, don't we?
How do you, if there's a dwelling, how do you, how do you charge water and sewer, anybody's got meter pits?
Well, I agree, but I thought that if if it's there, cuz other people who, well, there's a dwelling, but no one's in it. Uh paying service fees, hasn't this come up before?
These, this is meter pits though, there's a lot of, there's, which is a trailer.
This isn't a dwelling, there's no, nothing there.
That's, that's why I'm bringing it up, I just, I just wanna get.
There used to be a trailer.
About that.
There was a trailer there that he had the lot, somebody else on the trailer, the trailer is now gone, he's not putting a trailer back there for that lot.
Yep.
He also has another lot there.
Believe the process has been.
He's got a couple of, there's a couple of other meter pits down there, two that aren't getting services for cuz it's.
No trails.
There's no trailers, no nothing there.
Okay.
I think one of them, I think it's only just one of them, but behind Jake's, but, so this, this used to have a dwelling on it and there's no more, they're not putting a trailer back there. So he wants to discontinue, not as far as take it out, but it's off, and he won't be using the water and sewer anymore, there's no dwelling on that, on that parcel of land.
He doesn't pay what, doesn't pay these fees.
He doesn't wanna pay, doesn't wanna pay service fees anymore because there's no.
And the water's shut off, we still charge the service fee for the potential of. Opening that back up.
Once a building.
Trying to compare it to.
One of, once a building burns or gone.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand this too, so if there's a dwelling, but it's empty, you still do the service.
Usually you get, you get charged, but say you place burns and it's leveled, you don't get charged.
Empty land. You don't get charged.
Service fee.
Right.
Cause on Oak Street, the burn, and it's gone, that's deactivated, there's no service fees.
So we've always done.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So what would be the board's pleasure? Is there a?
I think you've got the motions you need, it's just a matter of votes now, I believe, I mean.
Well, I mean, he's giving notice of just deactivating, we, what we should just do is deactivate it. I don't think we should start a precedent of prorating a time period.
Oh, true, that's true, because that wasn't part of the resolution of us.
I mean, it's not that much, no big deal, but um. Do we wanna set a precedent to do that, I mean, we were getting notice on October fourth, so it's.
Well, he.
The period's done.
The reason why is because he got a, he got a bill.
Okay.
And he thought he wasn't gonna get a bill because the trailer's gone, so then he came up.
Not realizing that.
Not realizing that he would still get a bill, he didn't realize he had to come and say, hey, I, the trailer's gone, I shouldn't be getting it, he didn't think he was gonna get a bill anymore cuz the trailer was gone. And that's why he came up to give a letter to let us, I said, well, you know, the board doesn't know that your place is gone, so you gotta write some kind of letter saying that the place is gone just so that they're aware. So that's why it's that, it's that date, because he didn't get, the billings went out the first, when he got the billing, he called here, so why am I getting, the trailer's not even there anymore, so that's. Why the date is after, he didn't realize he was gonna get a bill for it.
Okay, so what do they normally use for for water when there was a trailer there, because they used a thousand gallons of this.
The reason, the reason being the thousand gallons is because we sent it out October first, I read a couple head, weeks ahead of time, this way here gives us time to correct if there's issues, so.
The trailer was there still there.
It was water was previous to the billing. Because I had read it was still a few weeks before it was gone, so that's why it turned over to the next thousand gallons. Cuz usually, we read around the fifteenth of the month, so it gives us a couple weeks, even though the billing, the billing says the first, it's actually read, you know, a few weeks before that, so.
So that could have actually been a month we considered of water, because we we read it on June fif- June fifteenth.
Correct.
July fifteenth, so that could have gone, used up some of the water.
So. It's, it was, even though July first was the last, it, we read it on June fifteenth, so you still had a few weeks, and that's why it flipped to the next thousand, that's why it shows a thousand gallons of usage. As far as what was used, as far as the thousand gallons. If that makes sense.
But all, but, but all we have listed here is refund just for the service fees.
Yeah, he's still gonna, he would still pay the water, and the way, the way she has it listed is, he would only, for the service fees for the time the trailer was still there.
Still pay the water.
It's just from that date the trailer was gone until the end of the billing cycle is what the, what the, what the fifty-five eighteen was.
And no, he did not request it, I just put it there in case the board brought it up and considered that. It's not his request at all, that's just information.
I wouldn't have a problem, you know, refunding that, um.
Oh, do we?
But, um.
We would just cancel the bill.
Pardon me?
We would just cancel the bill.
Well, he'd still, he'd still would pay.
He's still, he's still, he's still.
Yeah, he's still, he's still.
He still pays third, basically a third of the service fees plus the thousand gallons of water, which is.
Twenty-five dollars. Twenty-five dollars.
No. Much, yeah.
I mean, because if if something were to happen, um a year from now, we'd have to go the whole, before the zoning board and. And, you know, you'd get reactivation fees and all of that, so. I don't have a problem with that. If we, if the board so chooses to.
Okay, so how is the motion ordered, when I put this in?
We, we didn't make, it was just a motion.
When the.
Just to put it on the floor, okay.
I think, to.
So it's.
Discontinue the service.
Make an adjustment, make an adjustment in the existing water bill. Which would total. Fifty-five eighteen from seventy-four seventy-five is. Nineteen dollars, thereabouts, plus the cost of water, five dollars.
That's in the seventy-four fifty-five.
Yeah, that's in this one.
So his bill would be eighteen seventy-five, is that correct? That would be his bill minus that, so the bill, he would get a bill adjusted from seventy-four fifty-five to eighteen seventy-five. Cuz that would include a one-third of the service fees for both, plus his thousand gallons he used, he'd be paying for the water sewer.
Okay. Is that agreeable?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have a formal resolution.
Motion.
To the, we use a separate motion, yeah, I, I make a motion to. Uh discontinue the service, uh to this lot. On count B forty-six hundred. And apply the adjustment to the water and sewer service fee for the period of time that the lot was made vacant. Which is a total of fifty-five dollars and eighteen cents credit coming out that bill.
Second.
So the bill will be?
I think eighteen seventy-five.
Eighteen seventy-five.
I need to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, I mind.
We have a second to that?
Nineteen thirty-seven.
Amy?
She's seconded.
Okay, is there any further discussion here? Another roll call, please.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee McFedge.
Aye.
Trustee Trombley.
Aye.
Trustee Garrett.
Aye.
Mayor Martin.
Aye. All right. Old business wastewater treatment.
Uh, no, it's November meeting.
Oh, sorry. Change the date for the November meeting?
To what?
It's what now, November tenth?
The twelfth.
The twelfth.
November twelfth. Is it possible we could keep it in the same week?
That would be good.
That'd be better, I can't do that Monday before.
So the thirteenth or the fourteenth?
We can't do the fourteenth.
The thirteenth, it would be Tuesday.
I can't do the thirteenth.
You can't do the thirteenth.
Fifteenth, Thursday fifteenth?
I could do the fourteenth.
Okay, I can't do Tuesdays or Thursdays. I got, it's.
Okay, it's training.
When they get done.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, but that's only for a little while.
Yeah, I think it's last of it.
Okay, so let's, let's find a agreeable date with at least three or four of us here.
I can, I can.
Fourteenth is a Wednesday.
I can do the thirteenth or the fourteenth. I, I can do either.
I have my calendar, but I don't think I can do either of those. I can't do that Monday before I know that, that's a standard facility.
Let's go Tuesday.
Tuesday the thirteenth?
Yes.
Six thirty?
Yes.
You need a motion?
Yes, please.
I make a motion that we move the regularly scheduled Village of Champlain board meeting from Monday, November twelfth to Tuesday, November thirteenth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. So our new date? Is the thirteenth of November. Thank you. All right, any other new business? Old business. Wastewater treatment plant blowers, uh the bids have been sent out. I got a message today from Karen Clark. Thank you. Karen Clark, that three contractors had requested information on this. The bid opening is still scheduled for October seventeenth at two o'clock?
Three.
Three o'clock. And we will, uh, once we get the bids in and make a comparison, uh hopefully the bids will come in within our limits. If not, well, we shall see what the difference is, but I think they need to come in close to what we have, because that's what we put aside.
Yeah.
So, and the engineers know that. That that is our limits, because we have, we set aside money in a reserve account plus the grand amount. So we have, have to stay within those confines. I N I study has been completed, uh we have the, we have the uh, the sheets, the maps, et cetera, out here. We have three options, uh one is, as I described to the board last meeting, I believe. Our options are to do nothing, our options are to do a modified, which would be about four hundred and some thousand. And a full-blown repair, which would be about two point one million. So.
Was that a motion?
No, it was a blur.
Okay, I will keep you informed in that matter. LED streetlight con- conversion, uh we have been in discussion with ANCA at Arundek Northern, Northern New York Association.
Something like that.
Okay.
We missed some.
Anyway, Nancy Bernstein was here, gave, gave us a presentation uh at our last meeting and talked about streetlight conversion with LEDs, uh. We have sent requests to NISIC about cost of buying the existing or paying for the, paying for the life, estimated lifetime for the, for the bulbs that we have. Uh I believe that was about fifty-six hundred, somewhere in that very close area. And to do a study, and I think we talked about that, by, looking at buying and completing a study where they go around and G I S or G P S each pole, uh tell us how much it's gonna cost to convert this and do the conversion. We have been in conversation, Janet, and I have talked a couple times with these folks. We were in on a conversation with, with contractors and listened to what the contractors had to offer. Uh there is one, one offer of two companies getting together, doing the uh, doing the study, looking at the poles, helping us decide the, the voltage we want, the type, you know, the LED voltage and the color and all that stuff, I don't understand it, don't wanna pretend to understand it. But there's another call on Friday, it's Friday?
Yes.
Okay, there's a call on Friday to interview the contractor and talk about what they are going to offer. I would like to see a dollar figure. Uh Nancy and Jamie Rogers have been very instrumental in working with these companies. Uh I think once this gets straightened out, and we also have to, I have to contact NISIC and ask about the thirteen poles down there. It looks like NISIC run the wire for six. And then the final seven was added on later as a village entity. And this is back in nineteen ninety-six. I believe there was a, there was an offer, NISIC made an offer to come in and repair the bulbs or repair the lights and put in four new bulbs. No, every other bulb, seven. Seven new bulbs, but the decision of ownership was kinda left dangling there. And that has to be, it took a while for NISIC to even tell us where those thirteen poles were.
So where were they?
Along Walnut Street.
So it is a walnut, they are.
Yeah, but they claimed they didn't know where they were.
So the first six was hooked up by NISIC and ran, they ran the wire. Uh there's a, I believe it's broken, and the last seven, between six and seven or whatever. I believe that the line is broken, has never been repaired, has never been addressed. Uh we have paid a minimal charge for those thirteen.
Yep.
Thirteen bulbs.
Thankfully it was minimal.
Uh and as we go through this, with this conversion program, one of the things that the company that we hired, that is hired to do, they will do a study and they will, they will look at the cost, they will look at what we have paid and we will get a rebate, much like we did with the cable. Remember, we had somebody come in, look at our cable charges over the last two or three or four years, and they, we got a rebate, they took the percentage, but we got some money back. We'll do the same thing with the lights. Uh the payback period on these lights is very acceptable. It's extremely acceptable. So, once we get the study, I mean, they're gonna do thousands up here. If this firm is hired, they're gonna do thousands of streetlights up here, so the rate should be, should be pretty good. When we get to NISIC estimation, it was like twenty dollars a pole. I think they can do it a lot cheaper than that. Which will make our payback that much quicker and cheaper. So that's where that's at, uh we will see what Friday brings with our discussion with the contractor. Uh I would like to see a dollar figure, but I don't know how they work these things out, but this is a huge. The two companies that do this are quite large and they do a lot of these, uh, they do a lot of these throughout the state. So, I'm confident that this can be, uh, that that can be worked out in our favor. The contamination issue, as I mentioned before, the uh D E C had a huge vacuum truck here today. That vacuum was, it was, it was amazing. That thing would, that thing would pick up a eight-inch stone and drive through that hose and and the guys said you can hear it rattling around inside the steel tank. So, maybe that's, you need to have those uh wastewater bins down there cleaned out, that might be the company to do it.
Well, that's what we use in yours, that's what we use to clean the vacuum.
But anyway, uh what they found is there's still a lot of, uh, still a lot of contamination down on those test pores. And the plan now is to come back and dig two trenches, the length here of the driveway. Install two huge perforated pipes, bed it in stone, I believe, sand and stone. And then hook it up, run the line down across the back of the building here, and then hook it up to a big fan.
So that'd be located behind the building?
He's talking about putting it on the side, but we need that for.
Yeah.
He said we can try and narrow it up. Either that, the other option is putting it all the way to the back, running power and putting it all the way to the back. It's the only other option.
Can you, can you mount it like on the roof?
No, these are huge vacuum, these huge vacuum blowers. He was originally talking like a eight-by-ten building or a five-by-eight building. But he's trying to, trying to make it narrower and longer. He wants to put it on the side, but we've got ten foot, you've got a truck with a plow and a wing.
Right, how's that gonna get through?
We have.
And what they drew out of there will be put into the wastewater line in the back.
We're not getting trucks out, they're dragging it from the building here.
And here's the. Need a bigger door.
Well, the concern is, and I think Mr. Mulvey from D E C is, is, his concern is that he comes in here and starts excavating this whole property, that this building is not gonna sustain that.
Yeah, I realize that's a concern, I know it's the other option, I, I do understand that.
So I guess this is a lesser two evils, except it's gonna be quite expensive for us in the future.
How, is there a? Is there a project, is there a projected timeframe along this will run?
How long this will run?
Yeah.
Going to end forever.
You're talking a long time.
It's gotta live us.
Champagne valve entry still for sale, okay?
I wish.
Dollar, whatever it was, one dollar.
So that's where that's at, uh, he is going to, he being Mr. Mulvey from D E C, is going to get together with the engineering firm and come up with a workable plan. And I think that they, as I recall, understanding what he was saying, and he, Mr. Mulvey is very concerned about the health issues here uh for the staff and how he, you know, to rectify this as quickly and efficiently as possible. Uh I believe it, it's coming back, it's a bit more expensive than D E C had planned for, but nonetheless, uh.
In regards to that, I understand we're gonna have the cost of electricity to run this large vacuum.
I think when it's turned over, as I recall, D E C will help us out in that regard.
Okay, are they gonna help us out when that thing burns out, ten years from now?
That, I don't know.
That knows how long it's the last.
That, I don't know. Hopefully in ten years, there'll be enough of this dry out of here.
Well, that's why I was asking, how long is it, do they have a protection, like help?
That's what he's talking about. At this point.
Even, even to the F D, but even the F D's have to run it a minimum, so when you're talking like thirty some bucks a day.
Yeah, I, I realize there's a cost to that, but I, I'm concerned about the cost of maintaining it, if it's gonna be here a long time.
I think usually they, at first you're gonna do it more often, but after that, you have, you gotta do tests too, with the air coming through to see if it's still pulling the V O Cs out of the ground every so often.
Again, are they responsible for?
At the beginning, I know originally you said at the beginning they were gonna do that, they were gonna take care of that, but down the road. So that's what we said, we don't have any meters, special meters for that, you're talking, it doesn't sound worth buying them, cause it, what it costs for the meters, you gotta recalibrate it, you gotta sensors. You'd almost, you'd have to see down the road, but we have to hire someone to come and do testing.
We have to hire that, see the agency that was out here.
I think they're looking at the poss, the distinct possibility that if this runs as it's supposed to work for two or three years, it'll dissipate enough of the, of the petroleum or the contamination that's in the ground. Relieve that from the, it's gotta stop draining somewheres. I mean, it's in the ground, we know it's in the ground, it's in high levels out here, but it's gotta stop somewheres. So.
Yeah, there's no current source, it's left over.
Yeah, we're not, we're not building it up, it's stuck in the clay layer.
Yeah, it did, but it's left over, it's been there.
Yes.
It's not like we, we're trying to band-aid a source that's continually adding to it.
Right. Exactly. Those are all things that will have to be worked out with, yeah, with D E C once this gets addressed. All right.
This is depressing. Something happy we can end on. I'm on vacation a few hours.
That's happy?
That's happy.
Good for you.
We're happy for you.
I'm not packed or anything yet.
All right, uh let's see.
Nice.
New business, uh we've covered everything here that we need to discuss, I believe. The trail, election change, wastewater credit, discontinue, new business or old business, wastewater blower, I N I study, LED streetlight conversion, contamination cleanup. Is there anything else to come before the board?
A motion adjourned.
That's good. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't know ones opposed.
Never heard of any.
No, I wanna stay and talk longer.
Never heard of any.